Going.
You're all set.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's February sixteenth. We are back to having regular meetings of the Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee. It is about five twenty. Lauren, could you take the roll call, please?
Sure. Chairman Woods.
Here.
Counselor Camillo.
Here.
Carol Dugan, Dugan.
She's not with us today.
Yeah, I didn't see her. Amy Prati here. Counselor Rata.
Here.
Jeremy Wetzel.
Here.
I also see online Jennifer from KBA, Eileen from CSG, Rich from New Field Construction, Lou from Newington Public Schools.
Okay, and I think Dr. Fletcher is absent, too. I don't know. Does anybody know if he's been sworn in yet? I know that he was.
I don't know.
Going to take the position of, I don't know if he's been sworn in, or Amy, do you know by any chance? No? Okay, I'll look into it for the next meeting, though.
Yeah, I did ask the Clerk's Office to let me know, and they have not informed me yet, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Lauren.
Yep.
So the next item is public participation, and it appears we have no one from the public. Take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one, should I think? February first or second, when do we meet here? February second. If someone would like to make a motion to approve those minutes as written.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Amy. Second, second by Mike. Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Jeremy, do we skip over you in attendance? Did they call your name?
Oh, no, I, I was, I said here.
Okay, okay. Take action on potential change order. I mean, or Lauren, or do we have any?
Well, yes, we do, and I'll let Rich go through those.
Are you going to have Rich do it? Okay.
Yep.
Yep. I'll pull those up right now.
Thank you, Rich. I gotta get used to the new system now, because Jeff did them before.
So first one we have is PCO number thirty-four. That's for brick pier support excavation work that we did with the site work contractor on T and M to excavate for some unshown footings that we had to add for some brick piers. The, the brick was already owned, and the, the footing itself, we had covered in a previous PCO, so this was just the excavation portion of that. PCO number fifty-three is for an ASI four. This is the electrical portion of that ASI. We had previously presented in this meeting, the mechanical portion. So the electrical had changed for this elevator, just based off of Otis winning the, the bid. So depending on what the elevator was originally designed for electrically, this had to be changed, just to port this elevator. So these were the costs associated with that. PCO number sixty-four, due to some existing conditions on the roof with where the roof deck was and all the strength required to hold back the parapets on the roof level with the, the parapet framing. We had to add some angles in, and that is the cost associated with that here. PCO number sixty-five, we ended up laminating gypsum board to, to smaller walls in the C one oh three and one oh seven. Those are the two south classrooms where the bump outs are. We added those to cover up some exposed brick that was in those rooms that just wasn't in a good condition to leave behind. PCO number sixty-six is a contingency item for some storage of some millwork, just to accommodate our schedule. PCO number sixty-seven is for some extra ceiling material that we had. The acoustic ceiling contractor provide us at the summer phase to accommodate some of our temporary work and the rough ins that we did in the current occupied portions of the school. So we've been pulling from material for that for some time now. So this is just another contingency item to make them whole on that. PCO number sixty-eight is for ASI number thirty-nine. There's an edge of roof deck angle. This was at a location where a masonry wall was removed, and the condition left of the roof deck at the conference room was insufficient to mount the parapet framing, too. So we had to add structural materials there for, for the carpenter to connect to. PCO number seventy is for an RFI one eleven. We had to add fire protection heads to meet code due to some soffit height changes in two of the classroom, the north classroom of the Seawing. PCO seventy-two is, is, it's the second part of courtyard excavations that we did, because there was no room to run conduit within the building to feed the D wing electric room. So we had to trench through the courtyard to do this. So there, the excavation portion of that was unowned, and it's being taken as another contingency draw here. PCO number seventy-three is for temporary power distribution gear for the first phase because of just continuing industry issues with the electrical supply chains. It's beyond the contractor's control at this point for what they can get for gear, and we have some temporary measures in place being provided to distribute power for both the four eighty volt system and the one twenty that, the the four eighty, as well as the one twenty-two forty systems. The electrical contractor had to do that work, just to get this first phase to turn over. And PCO number seventy-four is for RFI ninety for an existing expansion joint that we had questioned the, what was required in the field, and through coordination with KBA, the decision was made to leave the existing expansion joints in place. So there is a credit here associated with leaving behind the expansion joints that are currently in place, as they're in good shape. And we just had a ad for one that was an unknown that was discovered after we took control of the building and discovered one that wasn't on the drawings. This is a net credit to leave those four in place and replace the one. Any questions on any of these I can go in further detail on?
Anybody have any questions for Rich? Yes, Jeremy. No, you don't have your hand up. That's my cursor, sorry. Okay, then I entertain a motion that we approve PCO thirty-four, fifty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six twenty-seven, and fifty-seven cents. If somebody would move that.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yeah, so thank you. And then next item is take action on invoices. Eileen or Lauren?
I can share screen.
We only have a couple, I think, right? Three of them?
There were three, yep.
Yeah. We'll do them individually. So this is just a monthly invoice for construction service group for their work this past month in the amount of ten thousand dollars, ten thousand twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. So I entertain a motion that we approve that for payment. So I want to move. Thank you, Kim.
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next one. So again, the monthly, leave just storage for the library books from Myers in the amount of, I can't read it, two, is it two?
Sixty-eight.
Thank you. I can't read it. My eyes aren't that good. So I entertain a motion that we approve the Myers monthly invoice for storage for two fifty-five, sixty-eight.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. One more, right? Okay. So it's IES, which is our testing services. Are we approving? Let's see, what do we, it's bubbled for fifty-four. Is that what we're?
That's, that's just the reimbursable that I noted for myself. Sorry, it's the total amount.
The total amount, okay. So an invoice for a total amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and six cents.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. There's one more, isn't there? We need to approve New Fields. Is that not in there?
The pay application A is further down on the agenda.
Oh, it's really down?
Yep.
Oh, I see it. I'm sorry. There's another business. Yep, you're right. Uh, next item is financial update.
Okay. Share my screen. All right. So we're doing well with the budget. Everyone can see, honestly, we've just had a few changes in the invoices that have been charged for owner's rep services. Or, let's see. Commissioning agent. KBA. Those are our normal monthly invoices that come in. And then we had the monthly storage invoice for Myers. So as you can tell, we're still doing well. And then we'll be talking a little bit about FFNE later. Our total budget is five thousand thirty-four, five hundred. Then we're going to be putting some purchase orders in against that. In technology, we have a purchase order in for this first phase as well. We are tracking well for owner contingency, even with the change orders that have come in. We're currently at one million, four eighty-three, four thirty-nine, sixty-eight. So, any?
Any questions for Eileen? Yeah, we're still tracking pretty good, it appears. And this phase is winding down. I think everyone's going to be pretty excited when they see some of the pictures coming up from Rich, as he reports to us the progress that they made in a week. It's starting to, starting to look like a school again, instead of a construction site. Okay, thank you, Eileen.
Thank you. I'll send it out, everyone.
Yep. Uh, next item is architect's update. Good afternoon, Jennifer. Maybe almost good evening. Still afternoon, I guess. It's not six yet. How are you today?
Okay, so, um, we did review the application for payment and signed off on, oh, I'm not sharing already. Sorry, I forgot the last part of that share. So we had reviewed that application for payment and all the PCOs that you had approved already this evening. Those were approved in the typical going back and forth, asking questions, making any revisions, suggesting any revisions and receiving revisions from New Field where we thought they were warranted. So we recommended approval for all those, and it already signed off on them, and those were in your packet. The same recent design activity that, that we, you know, do for, for these years into, you know, until the project stops. So continuously, there's RFIs, there's a lot of project meetings, there's reviewing of construction activities, just in general, doing pre-installation meetings for, you know, it's been pretty exciting for windows going in now and flooring going down. So, you know, we're there checking out the beginning of that work and you know, making sure that gets started off as we anticipated in, in the design that they're following through with that and reviewing, you know, reviewing that from time to time. And we're also helping with the furniture package that Eileen's going to be talking about a bit later, so that there can be purchase orders for furniture coming up in April and in the summer. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions for Jennifer? Seeing none, we'll move on to owner's project manager update. Eileen.
Okay. So it has, as Jennifer said, it's been very busy lately. There's a lot of activity happening. We're frequently at the site. Today I was on site doing a move meeting with Jason and his team. So we'll get them moved on two twenty-seven over into their new space. And then the next meeting, you can really see the progress. Once there's some pictures of furniture and people in their space. But things are really moving along. We've had several technology meetings, too, to get things right for Anna Reynolds, for Director of IT, Craig Holland. And Lou has jumped in to help as well, so things are going well, moving along.
Anyone have any questions for Eileen? Okay, thank you, Eileen. I know it gets a little repetitive. Nobody has any different information. We got to share the information over again. Construction managers update, Rich. Although everybody wants to see what you've got to tell us now, I'm sure.
Yep. So we've been, like Eileen said, we've been working with you know, the owner's IT, working on getting everything situated how he's expecting it, so that Craig can come in with all of his IT equipment and hit the ground running. So we've had a couple of meetings with our telecom contractor to make sure that we're all on the same page as to what we're providing here. We've also we've been testing our fire alarm devices. So the building, Fire Marshal was out yesterday, and those were reviewed. He reviewed the fire alarm system. We tested it at seven AM yesterday. He also walked the emergency lights, so we were able to simulate a power shutdown on the building and, and activate the emergency lighting inverters. And he also reviewed exit sign locations. He had requested one additional exit sign. We've since had that installed. The building official and Fire Marshal will be out again tomorrow and reviewing the above ceilings and above ceiling inspection will allow us to completely pad out the, the acoustic ceilings. So we'll drop every pad in there. All goes well tomorrow. The plan would be on Saturday, everything is passed and everything gets filled in in the ceilings. So we are working through with those inspections, and we have our final walkthrough scheduled for Thursday of next week with the building official for our acceptance and his final blessing on allowing students and staff to occupy. So we, we are continuing going through just these finishes. Here you can see we are working in the, oh, not actually sharing the screen. We had our final cleaners starting on site today. They were in the boiler room. They dusted this whole area down, because this is where our new heating equipment is. They, they were working here. We've also got the toilet accessories, the soap dispensers, the grab bars, whatnot being installed in the toilet rooms today. So those were, those are installed here. This is typical of all of the restrooms right now, at the end of the day today. So you can see, we do have all the tile is in. These rooms are all painted and the the accessories are going in. This is in room C one oh five, which is one of the smaller rooms between the two south classrooms of Seawing. You can see, we do have our marker boards and tack boards in place. Flooring is installed, the floor, the rubber base is down as well. So we do have our floor protection down, which is what the the ram board that you see on the ground is. All the seams are taped, protecting that before the final turnover. We also have our TV mounts are all installed and are now waiting owners to IT to, to complete the the install there, which we're, is one of the things we are coordinating with Craig Holland as well. This is a photo bottom of the ramp looking up at Seawing. You can see the, the rubber tile that is on the ramp is, is a different surface than what's at the top or the bottom of the ramp for, for traction there. So up, up at the top, we have LVT tile that has a pattern. I know Lou has seen Jennifer and Eileen are obviously aware of as well. Unfortunately, I couldn't get any pictures of that with the floor protection down, but there's, I believe it's nine different LVT colors in there. So we have worked with Jennifer. She's done some field dimensioning out there and given a final layout to the flooring contractor, and he began on that this week. That install will be completed the end of this week. So the, the rubber tiles working their way down the ramp as well. Tac boards are in place, and like I said, we're going for the above ceiling inspection tomorrow morning. So by the end of the day on Saturday, everything in these ceilings should be covered. All the ceiling pads should be dropped in. Uh, we do have all the millwork installed as well. This room, you can see the floor protection is down, covering up the finished VCT floors. They do have to come back and just install the rubber base around here, as well as drop in the remaining ceiling pads after the above ceiling inspection is complete. The radiant panels are largely piped in through these classrooms, which is, which will provide heat at the outsides of the building, essentially washing the, the windows for, for heat. So that, those are installed. We've also, on the mechanical side, have had all of our equipment startups between last week and this week. So all the equipment had the factory reps out, and they perform the necessary checks and startups. So we know that our, our controls are working. The commissioning agent was also out yesterday as well for that last startup of the rooftop equipment. He had no issues. We'll be seeing a field report from him as well, but we do speak with him in the field, and he didn't notify us of any issues he saw with, with the equipment startup. So that is all running or able to be run now. We are still, we do still have our temporary heating service in the building now. Here's the teaching wall, one of these south classrooms. So again, this is, we have the marker boards installed, and the black mount in the middle is for the owner provided seventy-five inch, I believe it's seventy-five inch LED TV that'll be mounted there. We've provided the rough in behind the TV for data and power. And again, one, one of the things that we have coordinated with Craig Holland. So this room, you can see, has the floor protection down over the finished floor, as well as the rubber base in. And we're going around doing final paint touch-ups through these rooms. And in the corridor, we have the water fountains. Again, floor protection is down. The wall tile is up and the, the yeah, floor tile in here, we have the hard soffit ceiling above. So that was completed. That was previously inspected. You can see our lights are functional. So all of our temporary lighting has been removed. We are using the permanent lights now. Sprinklers are installed in the ceilings. We will liven that system up prior to the turnover. We're working our way through the, the admin space. We'll be getting the carpet installed. That is on site, and we're just working through the last finished details here, getting the last coats of paint on, getting windows caulked, getting the precast caulked on the exterior, and the metal panel work is ongoing as well, with all the flashings being installed. And when you do see the metal panel go in, the large, large part of that install is the flashing details, the metal panel portion of it will go fairly quick. So they're working through that as well. But we are still set for our final inspection with the town on Thursday next week, Wednesday. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Rich?
I don't, but I think it looks, it looks great even from the last two weeks ago when we were in there.
The end does go, it, it does turn around pretty quick when you start getting the finishes in and putting, putting protections down and almost turning around and walking away from it. We you know, minimal comeback work is possible at that point.
Okay, thank you again, Rich, for all the hard work, and everybody on your team, we do appreciate it. Pictures look great. I can't, I can't wait to get back up there and walk through it.
We've been, we've been coordinating as well with Jason as, most recently as this afternoon, to make sure we're all on the same page as far as this turnover goes, because there are some, there's definitely coordination going on between our temporary walls and temporary classrooms. So we're making sure that he's well aware of that, and the other teachers can be all coordinated around it.
Yeah, we just, we clean up one mess, right, and start right on the, on the next, next idea. Yeah, so. Okay, so we're going to move on. Our next item is any other business pertinent to committee. We do have three items in here, and one is approved. Initiating a new purchase order for FFNE services. I believe that's what it's supposed to say. Eileen? You're muted, Eileen.
Unmute. All right, let me share my screen here. Oh, why did it go over there? I don't know. Is it sharing?
Yeah, it's in the center of my screen.
Okay, great, perfect. Sorry, I have to look over at the other screen. All right, so we have a total budget for furniture of five thousand thirty-four, five hundred. Our, our current costs are it, it, I'm sorry, the current cost is two thousand thirty-three, eight seventy-two, oh six. We have a hundred and fifty that was previously approved by the committee. However, we need an additional amount, so I am looking for an additional eighty-five K. And this is to cover the April phase, summer phase, and the tables for the cafeteria.
Because all we're really doing is pre-buying now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? For Eileen, so how are we going to have to do this here? We need separate POs, right?
I, all I need, well, I'm doing the separate purchase orders through Lauren. I'm just looking to add another eighty-five K to the previously approved amount by the committee for a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so we just need a motion then to approve an additional eighty-five thousand dollars for FFNE. Correct? That work?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody could move that motion?
Move to approve additionally eighty-five thousand dollars for FFNE.
And a second?
Second.
That, Kim, right? Thank you, Kim.
Yeah.
So now we have a total of two, yeah, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is what we're now appropriating into several different vendors to purchase this. So any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is New Fields monthly pay rec. And I have that here. So it is their pay rec number double printed to me here.
Eight.
So a, a pay application number eight and the amount of nine hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-one cents. So need a motion to move that.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, is there actually any other pertinent business to the committee other than our next meeting, which is March second? We'll mark your calendars for that. Anything else? Anybody have anything? Rich, Eileen, Jennifer, Lou? No, Lauren?
No.
Okay. Moving on, the next item is public participation, which I think we have no one. Just double check. Where are we? Yep, zero. Comments by members? Anyone? I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I appreciate it. And a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Night.
Thank you.
Two weeks or three weeks, whatever it is. Have a good night.
Good night.